Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Hamel, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Semenaro. Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Here.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
Mr. Potts?
Here.
Mr. Shaheen?
Here.
Ms. Trodowski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
And Mr. Basil?
Here. Okay, under announcements, we do have an edit to the agenda. Apparently, we're polling on page eight, under Field Trip Requests. We're polling from that November 25th, 2013 MECE kindergarten to Home Depot and November 26th, MECE kindergarten to Home Depot. Excuse me. Any other edits to the agenda from the board? Okay, seeing none. Procedures for public participation are in the inside blue jacket cover of the agenda. If you have something you'd like to discuss with the board, you come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and you have three minutes to address the board. Having said that, are there any presentations by the public on agenda items only at this time? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Basil. Tonight, we are recognizing two of our students, these two young, handsomely dressed young men here in the front of the auditorium from BEC, Aiden Rivera and Jesse Wonderly, who also happen to be cousins. This summer, I believe, as part of celebrating their respective birthdays, they decided to use the celebration of their birthdays to raise money to benefit the program at the Niemours Alfred I Dupont Hospital for Children. So, instead of having a traditional birthday, they turned that into a donation event. Together, they were able to raise $500 to donate toward this program, which helps children who are treated for a variety of medical issues. In addition to the donations, these two young men also helped make rainbow loom bracelets that sold for a dollar at their party, and then they took these bracelets to the hospital with them to raise more donations. I've heard that these two boys are working hard on ideas for next summer as well. So, we have you here tonight, gentlemen, and it's our pleasure to honor you for your efforts and your kindness, your thoughtfulness, your compassion and goodwill is to be commended. So, thank you very much. We also have a little certificate for you.
Okay. Again, thank you, Jesse and Aiden. We really appreciate your hard work. It's that type of citizenship that we all really respect and admire. Moving on to number eight, routine approvals.
Motion for eight, A through C.
On motion eight, A through C. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
We have motion eight, A through C. Motion by Mr. Shaheen, seconded by Mr. Potts. Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yep.
Mr. Potts?
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to presentations by board members. Any secretary of correspondence?
No.
Um, a B.C., Berks County Intermediate Unit report. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Basil. It was a very routine meeting on October 17th. We approved the minutes from our last meeting. We awarded a few professional contracts. We ratified an agreement with Redding Hospital to provide mental health services to the student assistant program at the Learning Academy at Allface. And we ratified an agreement with Berks Community Action Program for the BCIU to operate the pre-K counts program for 103 eligible pre-K children at three and four years of age in full day programs at one of the BCIU locations. I believe the news link has already been sent to board members. If you have any questions, please feel free to speak with me.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kurtz. Were there any questions for Mr. Kurtz by the board? Okay, seeing none. Berks Career Technology Report, Mr. Wolf?
Yes, uh, it was actually because the meetings are held every fourth meeting. We actually had two meetings from the last time, and that was the whole. The first one was September 1st, at the West Campus. What was discussed there of interest was the student arrival dismissal times, the two-hour stay at the state mandated in the construction time being that at both campuses. As far as BTE, BCTC specifications, of two and a half hours of construction, two hour, that's being met at the East Campus, but we're still short about 18 minutes at the West Campus. It's just an area of improvement opportunity there. We have renewed the agreement between BCTC and RACT for enrollment opportunities, their education opportunities there for the career search years for the 13 and 14 school year. The item was the JOC improvement agreement negotiated with the BCTA for five-year contract. The new contract saves the Grand Technology Center a minimum of $271,000 for its lifetime compared to pre- versus current contract. The average salary increase over that time was 145%, which does not include any reserve or security. The other item was tuition reimbursement reallocated to provide more tuition assistance to students with permanent certifications around the area. So, those were the items of interest by that meeting. The meeting happened last week, October 23rd, at the East Campus. We resume, uh, new results of the independent audit report. I have, since I won't be attending any more meetings, I do have a copy if anybody would want it. I'm sure it hands over. We discussed the 2013-14 enrollment numbers. Enrollment rate is down 5.1%. This is based about 28 students. The average county just by enrollment is down 8.1%. So, the BCTC is down as well as personally as the rest of the counties, so they're getting a better draw. This year's paying for enrollments 118 students. Why that's important is in 2009, we had spike in attendance at 117 students. That number will drop off the three-year average that is used to calculate proportional share for 14, 15 students. This could result in a slight cost reduction. The last three years, we've averaged around 103 students per year. This year's increased enrollment will be calculated into the next year, that would be the fifth and sixth budget, so we're going to put a higher number back on that average. Just something to note. The big island, this time around, was the pilot program between BCTC and the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation for OBR, a third-party, it's a third-party ring. This will be the first such agreement in principle yet. As I have recorded in a previous report out, the BCTC is expanding their service occupation program. This serves students that have severe learning disabilities. What we learned is that they'll be involved in this pilot program, OBR to provide support services to students. We will receive a four-to-one federal grant, hire a school, work coordinator and a job coach in the program. They will be tasked with promoting the students, arranging co-op opportunities and permanent job placement and student support. The cost to DTC, uh, to BCTC is $25,000, and the rest is federal money, uh, federal money grant. If DTC is successful, that's something that the state will be enrolling with other superior technology centers throughout the state, but Berks is the pilot for that. So, that was a pretty, pretty exciting one on that. Other than that, the next meeting will be the reorganization meeting on December 12th at the West Campus, 7:00 p.m. About, about the end of work, 24, I don't know, for any, any current members or prospective members of the board. I think it's a wonderful opportunity to meet and discuss issues we have in common with other board, other board members from the other districts. I encourage some to take advantage of it.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Any questions from board members of Mr. Wolf on BCTC? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to legislative report. Mr. Shaheen?
There's a one at this time.
Okay.
Seems to be no movement on a Harrisburg, any type of property tax.
Got it. Okay. Any other reports? Facilities?
No.
Uh, revenue enhancement? Okay. Uh, we had a finance meeting last week where we were basically discussing the budget. I think we shared with the board the PowerPoint presentation that was given to us by Kim Seldenridge and Mark Boyer, who'd been working on some assumptions for our budget, not only for this coming year, but for the next four to five years going forward. And as we move forward to that, I think that PowerPoint presentation would be something we'd incorporate later when we bring out the entire budget.
Can that PowerPoint be made available to the public on the web, on our website? It's got some pretty, pretty powerful information as far as projections of attendance. I mean, I looked at it, I was kind of shocked for projecting our, our school attendance to be back where it was probably 12, 15 years ago, based upon, it'd be, and the information went in there, birth rates and average age and that kind of stuff, which was pretty compelling to understand where the numbers came from, so.
Yeah, I thought, I was thinking about that, and I, this is, I mean, I'll, we'll do whatever the board directs, but my, I think my thoughts on that were that, you know, there was a lot of explanation about the slides and what they meant, and just posting on the, for the public, I don't know if you get the benefit of that explanation unless you're going to sit and go through the PowerPoint and listen to the Finance Committee meeting minutes. I suppose you could do that. I thought it might be more impactful if that was incorporated as part of an overall budget presentation made to the public when we actually unveil our budget and start talking about it.
That's fine, too, but I think it should be done initially.
Yeah.
Not, don't wait till, like, if you're going to do that.
No, no, I think when, whenever we discuss this in November.
Pretty profound data there, I mean, when you look at it, that really opens your eyes to where, A, why we are where we are, because everybody's like, build, building, but if you looked at the projections as they were running when we started, we needed them, but nobody looked at, I mean, when you went out five years, but now we're at the point where you look out five years now, and they're not needed and for obvious reasons, so I think it should be looked at.
Okay. I mean, anybody else have any thoughts on that?
No, I agree. I think the sooner we get the information out, the better.
So, just post it as is?
We can always follow up with, with more discussion later.
Yeah, I'd like to have it posted, so just, and then that way it's there, and they, when you come to a budget meeting, they can, they'll have it already.
Because maybe you have desperate questions, and somebody will come here and ask you a question.
For a finance committee meeting, we're, I'm going to be well.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Boyer? You guys oppose that tomorrow?
Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you. Um, I'm trying to think if there was any other, I mean, we spent most of our time just discussing that at the meeting, so I can't think of anything else of significance. Mr. Rouski, can you think of anything?
Not really of significant that we haven't talked about.
All right. I mean, we covered the debt, we covered the bond swap, those, that information should be posted on the website, so people can look at the amortization schedules and see where we are vis a vis our swap. We talked about the five-year budget, but we weren't really presented with anything because they're still working on it. But for the most part, we were just talking about what, how those enrollment numbers going forward are going to impact, you know, our budgets in years to come, so.
This one of the, if I can comment, because I've been working with Kim since he's gone here, when Denny left, the, I agree with, with Mr. Shaheen, the numbers are extremely compelling when you look at them, and the caveat that I would, would like to add is that this is a system that Kim used in, in the 20 or so years that he was at Conestoga Valley, and he said with very, very high rate of accuracy in terms of its predictive value, because you can get projections from anyone, but he's using live birth data from the Department of Health, not from anybody that's really involved in the education world, and using a, an attrition rate, for example, if you have 200 births at age zero in 2013, he has a formula that will actually show you how many of those 200 make it into the public school, because some go to private, some might wait till another time, and he said he used them with extreme accuracy for building and planning and budgeting purposes in the district that he had been in. So, I, I really do think, I was glad we were able to strike up a relationship with him while we're waiting to, you know, figure out what we're going to do with a new business manager, and he's brought a certain level of expertise that, especially in the area of enrollment projections, which are so important at driving the budget, that I would agree with your desire to want to have the public take a look at these as soon as possible. They're very, very powerful figures and information.
I, I thought it was interesting at the Finance Committee, also, the idea of cafeteria, changing our high school cafeteria meal plan, maybe going away from the government mandated to.
Yeah, we had, I, enough that we brought that up last. I got the microphone here. We can't hear you.
Okay, we, we heard it.
The, 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 there was a number of school districts in the, in the country that have gone away from the government subsidized program and have seen the revenue from their cafeterias go up, because the students are more willing to buy those meals than what's currently out there right now. Now, understand the free and reduced meal plan is something that we were not reimbursed for, but the few that I looked at or read articles on, they adjusted their pricing to compensate for that, and the schools off, over, underwrote the free and adjusted meal plan, so, um, something you can definitely look into.
That's exactly what Mr. Boyer had been discussing with us. I think he's still in the preliminary data gathering stage, so we don't really have anything other than he's warmed up to the idea and is looking into it, and we, we expect to get some, some, I think, more legitimate pro formas in terms of how that might work for our school district, particularly at the high school level, is, I think, where we're looking first if we were to implement something like that.
If I can add another comment, I would just like to mention for the public's benefit that I, I think all of the committees that we run are very important, but the Finance Committee, obviously, funds and finance drive a lot of what goes on in program. If you can get to those meetings, you can see by the, the conversation that occurs here, we cover a lot of things and aren't just looking at swaps and bonds and things like that. A lot of important conversation takes place at those meetings. If you can't make them, I would urge you to listen to them on the, on the tape or on the video, excuse me, the, the audio tape or whatever, we don't call it tape anymore, but we'll listen to the audio recording, and I think you'll find it very valuable. The board has given us a directive to present to them at the Finance Committee this month, balanced budget, pretty much the same way we did last year. And obviously, some difficult decisions are going to need to be made again for that, but the board will have it in their hands. It will be presented for the first time on November 13th. That is two Wednesdays from, from this coming Wednesday, it's really not that far away. So, we will hold that meeting at the Matthew Brook Building down in the old boardroom. If you're interested in hearing about that, you're all certainly welcome to attend.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Otto.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Have we done, have we done an analysis of what our, our reserve fund was over the summer when we said we had to maintain so much reserve? Do we know what the lowest we went to so in future budgets, we can make that determination?
Um, we've traditionally looked at that over, I mean, over the last few years, and, I don't know, Mark, can you say off the top of your head? I think we said it was about $2 million, 2.1 million is the working capital that we needed?
Yes.
Yeah.
I recognize what we said it was going to be, what didn't we actually need?
I don't think I've asked that specific question at the, at the meeting. We didn't do that analysis. We were looking at the bigger picture, so we could certainly get that number, you know, let's take a look at what the working capital was between July 1st and August 21st, when the tax revenue starts to come in. Okay, and we'll get that emailed out to the entire board. Okay, any other questions? Okay. Um, on another announcement, I should have mentioned this at the beginning of the meeting, we will be having an executive session at the end of this meeting to discuss personnel. Any litigation issues? Okay, so just personnel. Having said that, we'll move on to number 10, buildings and grounds.
Motion for 10A through D.
Okay, we have first and a second. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Motion was for 10A through D. Motion by Mr. Shaheen, seconded by Mr. Semenaro. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Trodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to financial approvals. Do we have a motion?
11A through G.
A through G. We have a second. Okay, any discussion?
On item D, I want to make sure that ArmorCap, is ArmorCap involved in that one at all? Okay. Actually, I think I'm holding that. Okay, thank you.
Uh, for the benefit of the public, if you couldn't hear that, the answer was no. Um, any other questions? Okay, uh, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Motion was for 11A through D. Motion by Mr. Shaheen, seconded by Mr. Semenaro. Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to personnel approvals.
Motion A through D.
A through D. Wait a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to say, Ms. Carol, um, status, you know, love each other for probably more years, either one of us is characters, um, visitor or inspiration to buy three dollars or that's all, one of your class. Our loss is somebody else's gain.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate those words. Um, any?
Can you repeat what that was, please? I didn't hear that completely.
Uh, I think Mr. Wolf was just expressing his gratitude to Ms. Long for her years of service here at Daniel Boone, and I think he ended it with quite eloquently by saying that our loss was somebody else's gain.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, any other comments on 12A through D? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Motion for, um, motion by Mr. Shaheen, seconded by Mr. Semenaro, for 12A through D. Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 13 programs.
13A and D.
First and a second. Any discussion? Okay, give me a roll call vote, please.
Motion for 13A, B, and D.
A and B. Yep.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Shaheen, seconded by Mr. Semenaro. Ms. Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to policy, 14. First readings. First reading. Yep, now.
Motion, motion 14B.
Yep.
Yes, motion 14B, second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please, on 14B?
Motion 14B by Mr. Shaheen, seconded by Mr. Semenaro. Ms. Trodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to 15A, transportation.
15A, second.
First and second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Semenaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hamel, yes. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Potts?
Yes.
Mr. Shaheen?
Yes.
Ms. Trodowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, um, any old business?
Nothing from the administration.
Okay. Any new business? All right, seeing none. Uh, any presentations by the public on issues?
[inaudible]. Those older ones were cited by annuals and now the teachers' salaries posted.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Shane? I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Back up on the mic, Shane. Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I was looking at your, and as the teachers' salaries, plus possible school district, I couldn't find anything on the administration. Is there, is, is the administration, uh, [inaudible]?
It's all public record.
That's all public record. You can find that under, I think we have the contracts posted on, on the website as well, so you can go to the, see what we paid the business manager, our superintendent, and so forth. The rest of the Act 93 group, I don't know if we've got posted, and we can certainly get that information up there as well.
Is it [inaudible]? I don't know if it's [inaudible]. Like, when you have the school teachers, a teacher that's paying, they're contracted at $16,000, you have to go to, to say, 85 because of benefits and other things, but I don't think you have the superintendent, the other administration, [inaudible] the same as the teachers.
I don't think, well, we've never had a request to put that information up on the website, so last year, if you recall, I think it was in June, we had a request to publish the rest of the information, which that's what we did, and so I don't, there's nothing to hide here, so we have no issue publishing the rest of the Act 93 information as well.
Okay, so, um, you will post the administrations?
Sure, we can do that.
[inaudible].
Yeah.
And one other question, is it possible to, kind of, the reason why teachers' salaries at $16,000 shows up at 85, or whether it is an extra cost to the [inaudible]?
That's total compensation, so it's, it's the benefits. It's the healthcare that's being provided, and it's the, it's the retirement's being provided as well.
And our end of the social security.
And social security, right. So, whatever the cost is to employ an employee is what's being represented there, because that's ultimately what shows up in our budget, and that's what the discussion was last year.
Right, I understand that. I guess my question is, is it possible to, kind of, the reason why teachers' salaries at $16,000 shows up at 85, or whether it is an extra cost to the [inaudible]?
That's total compensation, so it's, it's the benefits. It's the healthcare that's being provided, and it's the, it's the retirement's being provided as well.
And our end of the social security.
And social security, right, so whatever the cost is to employ an employee is what's being represented there, because that's ultimately what shows up in our budget, and that's what the discussion was last year.
Right, right, and I understand, I guess my question is, is it possible to ask, though, how much are spending for their insurance, and how much is costing them for, you know, their retirement, and how much, is that putting them all on the ball, trying to figure out, you know, what they're making, and what is the cost?
Well, we'd have to just create a different spreadsheet.
And then, without a third thing, when you, when you have, whoever says, oh, you're meaning, you should not attract a microphone, or, 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 maybe, maybe yours isn't working?
Well, I think sometimes they're turned off, because in the beginning, you know, people up here talk, and there's no need to have the microphones on. Yeah.
And then, and yours, yours isn't working?
Well, I've got a loud voice, so that might be one of the reasons why they turned it off. No, thanks, Shane, appreciate your comments.
Hello, Reno 367, I just have my major point of question, is a procedural question. I've become a few years, and I had a handle on how this whole thing works, we have a committee of the whole meeting, where all the subjects need to discuss, and they talked about, and then we have a school board meeting where you vote it. However, the last two months, September and October, you have voted at the committee of the whole meeting, and according to the policy number six, that we've got from you in September of 2012, the public meeting of committee of the whole is to discuss issues to be acted upon at a subsequent regular or special meeting on the board. They shall actually be taken at the discussion meeting on matters that are of emergency nature, or where time or weather constraints compel such a vote, and public notice of such meetings shall be added. The, all of a sudden, agendas for the meetings aren't posted until the day of the meeting. I understand that's not, like, codesets, you don't have to post them prior, but it's been kind of common practice that the agendas are always on the website, for Thursday, Friday, and the latest for the Monday meeting. Those now show up 2:00 PM on Monday, and there's no notification that there was going to be votes at the September and October meeting, there was no special voting agenda, so the public's not aware that you're trying to be voting at those meetings. I don't feel the burden of that fee, the building usage warranty, and the lease, for emergency in nature, when there was a time constraint, when votes had to be voted at the committee of the whole meeting, when the public is expecting to be discussing it, and then voting at the school board meeting, by a few more changes, what's to make so many things, you may eliminate all the trade at the committee of the whole meeting, because you're doing these final things? It concerns me, when we're not following common procedure, that's what we're doing, and I would like to know if you can address that. My other question is River Rock, River, the alternative schools, and I know that there was cost avoidance that was worked into this lease, what if we don't have two students to place? Was there some including to there? I couldn't find anything when I listened to the finance committee meeting minutes, when I read the articles. We have two students to replace there now. What if they both come out of the district? Will there be a dollar value then, that we pay to the district and rent? Things change, but we couldn't discuss that, because you voted on that at the committee of the whole meeting, and it wasn't on the agenda, where it should have been voted on tonight. My other concern is, we haven't had a business manager since June, and Dr. Otto, Dr. Otto's quote was, while we figure out what we're doing with the business manager, we're going into budget season. We don't have lovely managers in the annuals, and we don't have a business manager, and if we don't already give it to the public as to what we're doing, and following through with that, what are the steps we're taking in the number of our returns? Having to start a bad recruitment process, so that we're not going through another bad budget process without supervision, without, um, and it would be nice to get some direction.
Okay, well, let me address your questions one at a time. So the first thing you brought up was procedure. Every single meeting that we have is advertised as a voting meeting. It's been that way for decades, okay? So at any meeting, committee of the whole, or at a voting meeting, this board has advertised that as a public, to the public as a voting meeting, so a vote can take place at either of those meetings. And in regards to the River Rock lease, that was an emergency situation. They needed a decision from us prior to our voting meeting in October, this meeting, so we had to render a decision on that ASAP, and we had plenty of discussions going back to, I want to say, last April and May concerning River Rock, both in committee and at these larger meetings amongst the entire board, and at voting meetings, and at committee of whole meetings, about the River Rock lease, and what we had planned on doing there, what types of revenues we were anticipating, all that was public knowledge, and it's on the minutes that are recorded on the website. I don't know how else to answer that. What's that? Okay, so you know that. In terms of the River Rock lease, we do have a dollar figure put into that lease, and we've never had less than two students, um, placed, as a matter of fact, as I understand it, we have as many as seven or more in every given year.
My tenure on the board, once, we've had 11 alternative, I mean, we've had, eight years, we've had a lease.
We've had at least a decade.
And listening to the vice president?
Okay, all right, we're answering, we're answering your questions.
So, two were appropriate?
Ms. Reno, Ms. Reno, we're answering your questions, okay? So, we have a minimum number in there of two, okay? And we've never had less than two, ever. So, the idea that somehow, in the next six months, that that's going to change, doesn't apply, it's a mood issue. Yeah, because we, we don't, and we have a dollar figure in there, it's an equivalency. So we could sit there and say, all right, well, look, we're gonna, we're gonna receive a check, and then we're gonna turn around and write a check, okay? Okay, well, then, I think you have to trust that the board is doing the right thing by the school district. We've answered those questions, we've analyzed those issues.
Don't choose outsourced, don't choose our appropriate form of school.
That's not true.
It doesn't say?
That's not true. Ms. Reno, that's not true. What you're saying is not true, okay?
I listened to your finance committee meeting, and that's what the discussion was. Not every student is outsourced, and you go to this school, they all have their own needs.
We have a lot more students than just two that get outsourced on an annual basis.
And they may not?
And most of our students are, are more than capable of going to this program. I'm not gonna sit here and argue this with you tonight, okay? You, you've asked your questions, and we're trying to answer those questions for you. What I can tell you is that due diligence was done, we studied the issue, we had our director of special education involved, we had our superintendent involved in these decisions, we've had our attorneys involved in these decisions, we've reviewed the lease, I don't know, umpteen times, we've looked at our statistics going back five, 10 years to see what our enrollments were, and we looked at what a competitive market rate would be to place our students in other places, and what we could lease a facility for. We did all that due diligence. Now, a lot of those discussions took place at a facilities meeting, some took place at a finance committee meeting, some of those discussions took place administratively, behind closed doors, because they were part of negotiations, okay? I can just tell you that we've done the work that we did, and, um, we found it to be sufficient to answer the questions of the public regarding safety, and regarding the finances of that particular lease. And quite frankly, the lease has an emergency escape clause, so at any time, given six, six months' notice, this board can terminate that lease and move on to something else. Regarding the business manager, okay, we've, we've discussed this for three minutes, and then I've gotta move on, okay? Regarding the business manager, this board has had two business managers assist Mr. Boyer with our budgets, and with our finances, and with our audits. First, it was Denny, now it's Tim.
Veteran business manager.
Tim Seldridge. Both of these individuals have had more than 20 years' experience as business managers in school districts in the state of Pennsylvania. And we will keep going through interim, interim business managers until we hire someone, and this board's been actively out there interviewing candidates for a business manager, and working to see if we couldn't hire somebody, okay? So, we're actively doing that, and that's something that we've been working on since June, all right? Well, it's, quite frankly, it's, you're talking about, you know, we get into negotiations and things of that nature, I mean, we can't talk about that in public. Who are we talking to? What terms are we discussing? That's, that's not for public purview at this time, so, well, no one's asked the question. I think, I think it just goes, I would hope that people would give us enough credit to think that we're actively working on the problem, okay? I think you've got nine people up here that are very capable of, of, of conducting the business here, of finding a business manager, and that's what we've been consistently working on for the last four months. In regard to the superintendent, that process is also moving forward. As Dr. Otto is moving out, we've been talking to, um, different companies that can help us find a substitute for, uh, Dr. Otto, um, we're gonna be working with potential interim superintendents while that search continues. We value both of these positions extremely highly, we want to get the right candidates in here to help us not only with our budgets, um, but with our academics and everything else this school district's been going through for the last three or four years. It's not gonna get any easier, and we want to make sure we have qualified people in place, um, that we can trust to make the right decisions, and provide this board with the right information to help us make the right decisions going forward, so we don't treat these decisions lightly. If it takes us two months to find somebody, hallelujah. If it takes us six, or seven, or eight months to find somebody, then we'll do that too. Okay. You're welcome. Any other public comments?
This is the first one, and we're going to do this for years, so basically, my main question is, what benefit is it to the students to have 30-minute specials? Because I, I'm actually, even with the element of, and my, my child, and all my children, and I see the struggle of teachers to have the laptop on, and I see what, you know, students are needing to be compared to the last year, and I'm just, as a parent, I don't get it, I don't get, I mean, you just take it with a, to them, especially, I mean, especially even with gym class, I mean, the least get now, you have national residential fitness awards, that they won't hurt, my son hurts hard for it, and then I.
I, I think the, the first, I, I can appreciate your, your concern, I think that the, the question is really one of, we had a budgetary issue, and so to solve the budgetary issue, we had to make program cuts. So we had a choice, do you get rid of basic skills, or do you cut back on the specials? These weren't easy decisions, this board wrestled with those things for six, seven months last year, um, trying to come up with what the, the right approach might be, and this board agreed that that was the best way to do it. I mean, we had that opportunity of losing all specials.
I just, I just, I just, you know, I don't care any bit at offering off a cut, and hiring salaries to, to make a difference, it's just.
We, we don't control the salaries of, those are contractual. We tried negotiating those salaries, and we were unsuccessful.
Well, it's, it's just, I just want to know, I just want to know, I mean, I guess still, they didn't really answer how his benefit from the top, so.
Let, let me chime in, I, I think, um, Mr. Basil, kind of, the budget at this time, and I, and this is just a little foreshadowing again, for everyone that's listening, when we present the budget on November 13th, the picture is not getting any prettier, so I just want to say that. When we, um, because I had a, you know, a big hand in what happened last year with those recommendations to the board, I didn't like them, but again, it's a matter of, of figuring out what it is you're trying to say. I look at the cup as half-full, we, we still are able to save and maintain those programs to the degree that we could, based on the finances that we have. No one, at the end of the day, likes to talk about the money, but unfortunately, the money drives the program, and we, if you've been following this school district almost for the five years I've been here as superintendent, we have had some very, very difficult budget issues, some are, most of them are coming from lack of funding from other sources, some decisions that the boards have made in the past, and it's just, when you put it all together, it's the current reality, and the reality is, we were able to save those specials, rather than having to eliminate them totally, which, if, if we would have looked at it even more closely, could have been a reality, and may be a reality going forward. As the pension costs in this state continue to climb, as our contractual obligations continue to escalate, there are going to be many, many difficult decisions that have to be made again. When we present the budget on November 13th, I'm working on it now, Mr. Boyer, and Mr. Seldridge, and the department heads, and I'm telling you right now, it's not pretty again, and we're gonna present it to the public on November 13th, and no one wants to raise taxes, no one wants to use fund balance, no one wants to cut program, something's gotta give, and that's what this board has been dealing with for four years. No one on this board, no one on this administration wants to cut specials, but there are only so many decisions that you have at the end of the day. I mean, I, I started my career as an educator, I'm still an educator, it, it cuts very deep to have to make those cuts, but there are realities that we have to deal with. So I, I don't know what else to say to everybody, I've been saying it for, for three and a half years now, and it's, it's just going to, um, it's going to be a very, very interesting process again, come the spring.
Um, well, I've only been through it once, and, um, when we, when we hired Dr. Otto five years ago, um, essentially what happened at that point in time was the board contracted with, uh, was it?
PARs.
PARs. And they provided to us two gentlemen who had some experience in helping school districts locate potential candidates, um, they put together a portfolio of people who would be interested in being a superintendent for Daniel Boone, uh, we spent months, uh, setting up interviews on special nights, um, where we interviewed two or three, uh, potential candidates at a time, we narrowed the field down, um, sometimes there was nobody that we were interested in, and we have to go back out to the marketplace to find other folks, and, uh, that process, I think we started that in January, we finished in late April, um, when we hired Dr. Otto. This time around, we've been, we've reached out not only to PARs, but the BCIU, we've looked at private search firms, um.
Chester County.
Chester County IU, we're, we're looking at lots of different resources to get, um, the largest pool of candidates, we, we think are gonna be qualified for this position, that we could take a look at, and, um, and that's what we've been, that's sort of what we've been pursuing. Um, well, no, it's, I mean, the board ultimately hires the superintendent, and, you know, just as we sign every other contract in the school district, ultimately, we are responsible for who's hired here, and, um, so the board does those interviews, and, um, you know, we can use whatever technique we like, I suppose, in terms of, so long as we're consistent, we treat all applicants fairly, um, but there's a lot of people who sit on this board have a lot of experience in hiring, um, individuals, and doing executive searches, and we did hire some professionals last time to consult with us and provide us with guidance and advice on that process, and, um, more than likely, we're, we're doing that again this time as well.
Very, I'm, I'm there, and you don't think I'm here to stroke immediately?
I don't, Mr. Templeton, I don't. I, I hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
...
still really, it's not, it's not, it's not.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, I'm Karen, and I'm from, I got some, I got students at AC, and also, he has teachers come and speak to us last month, and there's a face or a name that, concerning, that's our, 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 last year, they had eight math classes, they've gone to six math classes, one of them is twenty-two, which is excessive. Also, they have learned basic skill person who, those are, so, so, this last year, three day, we've, our attention are now, not, you know, she's spread over, you know, all of the, I think that's very concerning. And I want to know, that'll change over the next year. Also, every year, it's, 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 and I still want to see this year.
Well, I, I guess, well, the answer that I had for the other lady is gonna be pretty much the same as I'm gonna answer to you as well, and Dr. Otto can jump in when he sees fit to fill in some of the details. You know, if you recall, last year, we had removed basic skills from the budget completely. And then, at the last minute in June, we brought it back. So, you know, the fact that we even have a basic skills program, I think, was a bit of an accomplishment, we managed to, to get done and keep here at the district. And going forward, I, we haven't even seen the budget, we've seen some preliminary cost estimates, we're gonna be about $3.6 million in the hole, so we need to figure out how we're gonna fill that hole. I would imagine that a lot of the same suggestions that were offered up in the past would be on the table again for consideration. I think this board made it abundantly clear last year that we would do whatever we could to keep the kindergarten program and our athletics and, you know, basic skills and elementary band and all those things that we worked hard to keep in our budget as long as we possibly can. But you're gonna have a completely different board sitting here in three weeks or four weeks. And, you know, that board's gonna make different decisions. I can't, I can't make any promises as to what those decisions are gonna be next June. A lot's gonna depend on, a lot's gonna depend on lots of different things. It's, you know, we, we have a good, pretty good idea of what a fund balance is going forward. It's gonna depend on how good a job we do this year in staying on track on what we projected to spend. It's gonna do a lot, have a lot to do with what other alternative revenue sources we can dig up and, you know, what the state is willing to chip in to help us out. Like we do every year, we'll go back to our collective bargaining partners and see if there's anything that we can negotiate going forward. So there's lots of things for us to do between now and June to improve that situation and keep our programming intact as much as possible. Yes, could you speak up a little bit?
As a parent, please, could I?
Come to the meetings, participate, you know, have your voice heard. I think that goes a long way. You know, typically, what you'll see at these meetings is, when the budget gets announced and, and the suggestions are proffered for, for balancing the budget, there's a hue and a cry from the public about, you know, what are we doing and what are we thinking and how can we possibly be even suggesting these things? And I would say that if people were here at every single meeting for the last three or four years, you'd have a good idea why we are where we are. And so getting educated and, and understanding, you know, what, the context of those suggestions, what it's being presented in, I think helps us all step back a little bit, you know, from an emotional point of view and look at it a little bit more critically to hopefully come up with the best solutions to meet everybody's needs going forward. Clearly, every year, the outcome has not been desirable. I don't think, for, for the six years I've been sitting on this board, I haven't liked any of the budgets that I've had to vote on. But I don't know if anybody else here has, but, and I think for the next two or three years, it's gonna be like that as well. So the question becomes one of, how do we prioritize the things that we wanna keep versus the things that have to go? And, you know, whether we're raising taxes or spending fund balance or doing something else, those are other levers that we have available to us to soften the blow. So I would just come to as many meetings as you can, come to the committee meetings.
I think also your elected board member is someone you should call and contact and say, give me, give me some more information or give me more detail. That's why you voted us in, so we'd be happy to do that.
I would just add one thing to that, I would, as a parent, as a, as a taxpayer, as a citizen of the Daniel Boone community, as difficult as it becomes sometimes, I would just urge you to keep an open mind and look at, look at the issue from both sides. I don't wanna repeat everything I just said two minutes ago, but it's been bad and bad decisions that have had, you know, that we've had to make. So it's, it's, it gets emotional, it, it gets, you know, sometimes people feel like they're backed into a corner and sometimes there's just no way out. But the mandate that the board has and the administration and the superintendent, whether, obviously, it won't be me at the end of this cycle, but I'll get it started, the mandate is to present the public with a balanced budget. That's, that's a fiduciary and a school code requirement. And I, I hate to say it, many times it comes down at the end of the day to a math problem. I, I think obviously, I've always held a moral obligation to try to do as much as I can for the children, but I also have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that the money gets spent wisely. And I take both of those, as any superintendent and any administrator should, I take both of those responsibilities with equal seriousness. So it becomes a very, very difficult task at the end of the day. So I would just urge you to keep an open mind through the process.
Any other public comments?
Motion adjourned.
Speaking adjourned, thank you.